Start our business to be the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like welcome everyone to our March nineteenth regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda if I could. Um, to include number D request for alcohol at the Creamery this summer for a graduation party.
Our request to amend the consent agenda to include item D, which is a request of alcohol serving at the cheese factory. We have a second.
Second.
We have motion and a second to amend. Any discussion with Brandy?
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I to amend the consent agenda. Bring us to the consent agenda, which includes February twentieth regular council meeting minutes. Request to change the minimum lifeguard age to fifteen years old. A request to use the city parking lot for the gymnastics fundraiser and also item D, which we just added.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We're motioning in a second to approve the consent agenda. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Hi.
David is I. Brings us to public input. We have one individual signed to speak with public input, which will be Andrew Struckman. Andrew, if you'd like to step up to the lectern, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Andrew Struckman, twelve oh eight five hundred eleventh street, Pine Island, Minnesota. So this is in regards to the bridge on five hundred eleventh street, across from Collins Park. Five hundred and eleven street bridge is in a dire state of needing to be replaced. Last two years I have lived in my home on five hundred eleventh street. I have seen the bridge affect the community and the families negatively. My wife and I work from home, so most days we see the flow of traffic. We see neighbors, school bus, school buses pass by about four times a day because they can't cross the bridge. Along with garbage companies, delivery trucks. We actually had one delivery truck driver that went in the ditch trying to turn around. That was last winter. The bridge has affected me and my family personally. We've had to use alternate routes if we have big equipment. We have a field out in the back that we rent out. Farmer has to go all the way around up the hill to get through. We've also had a family member that had their back window get busted out crossing over the bridge. Left glass shards in the backseat where their kid was. They have crossed the bridge before, so they knew about the potholes, stuff like that. My big concern is about the weight limit as well as the size restrictions. They they help mitigate it from collapsing or anything like that sort. But I do know as it progresses, it's going to continue to degrade with time. I'm sure I'm not the only one in the area that has dealt with this. Due to the bridge. It's an also an eyesore to the community park in the area. We've been told when we moved in that there was maybe works of it being repaired. I haven't seen any of that from my research. I'd just like to see progress on it by the end of the year.
Yeah, your neighbor up the road, Linda Kelly's been an advocate too. You want to give him an update? Are you able to give him an update or Craig?
I can, yeah, I have a microphone otherwise, Craig. Yeah, so it's actually is scheduled to hopefully be replaced this summer. So we have been in the process about the last three years. It takes that long to put plans together. The plans are finally approved. We submitted those plans to MINDOT. I believe they're still with MINDOT, waiting final approval. We got approval from DNR already. Yeah, so we're waiting for the final improvement from the state. We are receiving federal dollars to help with the cost of that bridge, so we have been awarded that, so.
Getting going forward, so.
Awesome.
That works.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Let's move on to administration. Our first item is item A, Semcra's request for a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and council, back in September twentieth of twenty twenty-two, we entered into an agreement with Sentra to administer a housing and commercial rehabilitation project, if you remember. At first there was a targeted area, but we actually dropped that targeted area. We came back on last year to remove that. And part of the program requirements through the state is that in our second or third year of the program, we do have another public hearing so that we can receive feedback from the public. So this is simply a request to have a public hearing in our next city council meeting. So I'll be on April sixteenth.
I'll move approval for the Sentra request for a public hearing.
One second.
Motion in a second. Anyone from Semcra here tonight that's wanting to share anything? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second. This will be at our April meeting, so it will be advertised. Any other discussion, council? They've been proactively looking for properties, so we appreciate the help on that. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David will be. Item B is public hearing for facilities plan for the wastewater systems improvements. Got a lot going on with this project as well. How are you?
Good, good. Mayor and council, members of the public. So tonight we're here to present the facilities plan. We're going to summarize that in a presentation. The document is about order pages and length. So we've got about ten, ten slides that we'll run through that will kind of summarize the findings of the facilities plan. Can you guys see the presentation? All right. My name is Craig Gritten. I'm a civil engineer with Woodset, the city engineer for Pine Island. And with me is Glenn Gustafson. He is a civil engineer with WHKS. We are a part of the engineering team that's working on the North Sembro. Sanitary sewer district project. Glenn is the project manager on the project, so. So we'll kind of run through this presentation and then at the end we'll open the public hearing and answer any questions that you may have. So the purpose of this presentation tonight and the public hearing is with this North Sembro sanitary sewer district project, we're pursuing state revolving fund funding on this project along with point source implementation grant funding. So and because of that, state statute requires us to put a facilities plan together where we look at alternatives for sanitary sewer treatment. And then also the cost implications and then the selected alternative that is presented in the report. So we're here to present that and then gather input from from the public. So tonight we're going to be covering a little bit of the background. Some of the history of the Pine Island treatment plant. We'll look at the alternatives that we that we studied as part of the report. The selected alternative, which is the most feasible. Look at the project site that is will be the location of the new facility. The estimated costs and then how that affects sewer rates here as well. And then finally, we'll look at the anticipated schedule of the project. So to start some of the background, so the initial facility in Pine Island was constructed in the late nineteen fifty's. There have been two major upgrades and those were in the mid nineteen eighties. And then the the last one was in the mid nineteen nineties. And the typical design life of a sewer plant is about twenty years. That's what we designed for, so we're we're getting into that thirtieth year. So we're right at the end of the useful life of the plant. There's a lot of equipment that that is degraded and needs to be replaced. The lower left hand picture there shows some of the mechanical components in the Pine Island plant. And rusted materials. The valves and different components are tough to get just because they don't make parts for them anymore. At the Pine Island facility, we have limited growth potential just because of the proximity to the highway and then also to the river. We're located in a flood plain, and so we have seen flooding damage with some of the large rain events. And there have been a couple instances where we've had to bypass pump, meaning that the inflow of wastewater into the plant is is so high that we can't run it through the plant and treat it. So the only option is to really bypass it and and then send that downstream. So all of those are reported to the MPCA and those are rare occurrences, but they have they have happened in the past. So some of the alternatives that we looked at, one would be to construct a new wastewater treatment facility here in Pine Island that would be standalone, so no regionalization with that. And then also we looked at regionalizing the wastewater facility. And that would include the communities of Goodview, Wannamingo's, Zimbroda, Pine Island, and then the Prairie Island community as well. After looking at the the costs involved and the rates and the potential for funding through the legislature, we are recommending proposing or proposing a new regional wastewater facility. And that would be show collaboration between all of the communities. The new facility would be located somewhere east of the existing Zimbroda facility. So the wastewater from the from the surrounding communities would be pumped through a force main to Zimbroda. So a little bit more on the selected alternative, again, this is for a regional facility. Last summer, after the legislature passed the legislature passed the twenty twenty-three bonding bill, they allocated ten million dollars for pre-design and land acquisition for the North Sembro sanitary sewer district. And so the community has then entered into a joint powers agreement. And then as far as construction goes, what that would mean for Pine Island is we would construct a new lift station at somewhere just west of the existing Pine Island plant. And that would pump the force main or pump the wastewater through a force main up to Zimbroda. And then the existing plant, the majority of that would be decommissioned. There may be some buildings that that would remain just as offices or storage. But the but the intent is to decommission the existing plant. As far as maintenance goes, the North Sembro sanitary sewer district, once that is formed, that would they would be responsible for maintaining that lift station. And then also all the force main that would be that would be aligned up to Zimbroda. But the city would then be responsible for the collection system within town. So kind of like what we, the current arrangement that we have with now maintaining and upgrading the sanitary sewer in town. Next on the project site, and this is a little tough to see, so I do have some handouts if you're if you're interested in this. But we looked at various alignments for the force main route. And one ninety, one hundred and ninety-fifth avenue up through Pine Island Township and then Zimbroda Township seems to be the most logical location for that, mainly because it's a it's a direct shot. And so we did meet with the the Pine Island and Zimbroda Township boards and presented this to them and just kind of went through some of the plan as far as, you know, what we'd be looking at for agreements and permits to be with them at right of way. The majority of the of the of force main would be is planned to be in the right of way. But we don't know which side of the road that is, so we haven't gotten into those specifics yet. That'll come later with the design as as a project looks forward. Next on to the estimated project costs. So for the regional facility, the cost split for the facility itself is based on fifty percent flow and then twenty-five percent TSS, TSS, which is total suspended solids and twenty-five percent VOD, which is biochemical oxygen. So the flow is just add, it's the it's the rate of wastewater into the plant and then the other fifty percent. So the TSS and VOD deals with the strength of the wastewater. So that is the cost split. And then as far as the conveyance goes, it's being split up amongst the communities just based on peak flow. That's it. So the total project cost is estimated to be about one hundred and eleven million, three hundred thousand dollars. Pine Island's responsibility, based on the formula that we just described above, would be a little over forty-eight point five million of that. And that's that is does not include any funding that we talked about. So that's just a straight cost split of that forty-three point six percent. The, but with bonding dollars, which we're anticipating receiving, again, we've received an allocation or an allotment of ten million dollars and we're pursuing more funding, that would drop Pine Island's responsibility to about twenty-four point eight million. So again, with the bonding bill that was that was passed last year, we received the ten million for the land acquisition and the pre-design. So that has been underway. There's a signed purchase agreement for for the property where the new facility would be located. And and then we've got a forty-four point eight million dollar bonding request in for the twenty-four bonding bill. So representatives from the the district, from the communities that have gone up to the legislature discuss with them needs that we have. And and so that's that's been ongoing really ever since last year. If Pine Island were to pursue their own plants by by ourselves, the total project cost would be about forty-six million, three hundred twenty-five thousand. Now, if you look at that compared to the overall Pine Island portion of that forty-three point six percent, at that forty-eight point six million, it's actually a little bit less to pursue our our own plants. But a couple of the advantages are the legislature has been in great support of regionalization. So anytime they see community collaboration, it's there are bonding funds that are available. And so they've shown support with that already, again, with the allotment of that ten million dollars. And then following construction of the plant, the operation and maintenance costs also decrease because of the game efficiencies of staff testing. You replace it one pump instead of four and and that. So there we're estimating those cost savings in in maintenance costs of about five hundred thousand. So how that affects sewer rates, and these these rates that you see here are based on residential rates. So currently, our we're seeing average user rates of about fifty dollars, a little over fifty dollars. That's with the twenty-four base rate of twenty-two seventy-one. And then also for our five thousand and forty-six cents user charge per thousand gallons of of water used. So the projected residential rates, and again, these are these are preliminary numbers. There will be a rate study that is that is done to determine what this rate will be. But if the bonding bill money is is allotted with that planned regionalization, we have about a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month. So sewer rates would go up with the regionalization. But if Pine Island pursued our own plants, you know, we'd be looking at rates anywhere between two hundred thirty, two hundred sixty dollars a month. So again, just because the the bonding dollars aren't aren't there. We are pursuing additional funding opportunities. We've mentioned the PSA or the point source implementation grant funding and that pre-mort development funds. So we are pursuing some of those options, maybe some federal, federally directed funding as well with this project, so. As far as the schedule goes. Correct. Yep, yep. So and again, that's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So what we did when we when we project this forward for a twenty-year lifespan of this, we look at the growth growth rate of the community. And Pine Island historically has grown at two and a half percent. That's what we've seen in the last last twenty years. And so we use the growth rate of two and a half percent and then also included the population of five hundred for the Pine Island. So when we look, when we say a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month, that we're using today's population. And we're projecting that forward to the actual cost that we're buying for additional capacity. So so that that user rate there, if we base it on a future population number, that number goes down dramatically. So so again, as growth occurs, then user rates will will stabilize and we won't see those those types of rates. Anything to add on that? Yeah. So as far as the schedule goes, everything above the blue line there has kind of been been done to date. And there's been a lot of work that has been done to get to this point. It was really in the summer of twenty twenty when the communities really started to collaborate and meet on a on a regular basis to look at regionalization. And then Prairie Island, the community enjoyed or announced their support for the project in fall of twenty-one. Last summer, we we were allotted the ten million dollars for the land acquisition and the pre-design. And then we joined the or Pine Island joined the joint powers agreement. And then in March of twenty-four, so just recently here, we did submit the facilities plan. Again, this document, we submitted that that to the MPCA for review. So they are, that is under review or will be shortly when they when they get to that. But so that's all looking back at what's been accomplished so far. And as we look forward, we're looking at, you know, sometime in June here is when the MPCA will come back with comments and then approval of that facilities plan. We'll start to get into more of the design of the project. And and then if all goes well, the fall of twenty-six is when construction will begin with completion in twenty. It's kind of tentative timeline that's that's set up here. Again, a lot of this is based on the funding, but what comes out of the bonding bill here this this upcoming year. So with that, that's the that's the presentation, Mayor. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
And motion open for public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second to open for public hearing. Questions? Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is. Is anyone from the public that might have a question regarding this project? Craig is here to answer. Want to announce yourself and your address, please?
Sure. I'm working with all working with this. In comparison to the design space, I mean, I think about consolidating from, you know, rolling one floor homes down the line and all this stuff. It's great, except now you're relying on just one pump always working. Are there redundancies in this design, say, if the force main water, you know, the line has issues? Are we going to have a reserve here yet if we don't have that flow into people's homes like they're in a flood state when that happens and stuff like that? Those things kind of.
Yeah, yep, yep. And that's a good question. There will be redundancy in the in the lift station for looking at a triplex unit in there reading there are three pumps. Not that we're comfortable as far as putting all that and stuff down. As far as the force main and storage here, we will have some utilization. But we haven't decided if that would be in Pine Island or at the at the Zimbroda facility. So if so, we're designing the the force main and these pumps off of off of flows with a factor of safety that would include some flooding events and everything. And that would be sent to Zimbroda where we go into a large storage basin, essentially what can under change that would hold that until until it's.
Right. I was thinking if there's issues on the line or something you can't get down there, we have a reserve on all these communities that could take a week or the country to sort of wait for, you know, before we get into it.
Right, right, right.
Well, typically with these with with force mains and lift stations, that those type of issues are a rare, very rare occurrence. And a very rare occurrence. Now, it's it's it goes into the whole discussion of just like your storm sewer system in a city. If you if you try to plan for a hundred-year storm event and try to design the whole sewer system for a hundred-year storm event, the system becomes so large that that and that event is so rare. Now, we can say that because hundred-year events have happened often as of late. But but where you where you get at is you you start to put the amount of redundancies that you put into it and the cost effectiveness of that goes through the roof. And now you're adding systems that that typically aren't needed. And most of these, most of these lift station force main systems that go to say any of these regional facilities, they do the same thing. This is how this is pretty much, this is the way the design has been done for years on these systems. And so again, it's it's a proven system. If you have issues, and I know we've had discussions in our technical committee groups about this exact subject. If you do have, if you do have issues, like say you say the rarity of a system issue on your force main were to happen. It's from a leak, right? To say it first. You have to shut it down, right? Well, there are there are systems and there are there are companies that do bypassing systems like overnight. You can you can drill into these lines, you can drill around, you can shut the system in between off, have a temporary bypass on that system and keep your system up and running. So you do have those options. But if it becomes that big of an emergency that something happens, the rare event of a bypass could potentially happen. That's just this.
That's what I was just saying. You would mention you were going to basically get in the existing plant. Well, maybe there's something in the design where to hold up the leaks where if there are some, so that you can fix the line and do something to that. Because we're relying on this to be.
It can it can be looked at, but it it can be looked at, but at this time, the plan has been to to have the retention system, have the new facility. There are costs that we haven't figured in. We don't know those dollar amounts of what it would mean to run that system back within the city. The debt is responsible for running that system versus the Sembro sanitary district.
Do you like a clutch?
Oh, I know. I, yep, I'm, yep, I'm I'm aware of what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's a good question. And Sam just talked about that. You have technical meetings every every month. Those those sites are.
During the floods, it hasn't been shut down and that backflow. It just built up. Well, I would, I, because I thought it was a problem for people that didn't have, I know. You know, get back up to their bases. So that's what I'm just trying to make sure that helps something that can never decide.
Correct, yeah. That and the lift station with the with the generators and that.
Anybody else? There's I I would like to, at this point of the presentation, I'd like to publicly thank the staff that have been working on this. And like Craig said, this conversation started back during the pandemic of twenty twenty, where communities had to come together, start problem solving. And it was a great example of the collaboration and myself and other mayors from the other communities. And we've had city representation up at St. Paul. And some days it gets very, very frustrating and making sure that rural Minnesota voices are heard. And this is a prime example of what the state is looking for in these rural communities. Because it's 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 amazing how many other communities have reached out asking how this project project came about because they're now faced with having to look at.
because they're now faced with having to look at future plans to replace their own wastewater treatment plants, and they're extremely expensive. So I I want to thank publicly thank our city staff and engineers and whatnot for working on this, so. Council, any questions from from you or any comments? Anyways, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing portion of the presentation.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing portion. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Guys, which will bring us to item C, which is a resolution twenty four dash eleven approving the facilities plan for the wastewater system improvements.
I move twenty four eleven.
I'll second.
For the motion and a second to approve resolution twenty four dash eleven. Any other discussion? Again, thank you, Craig, and that. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. Resolution twenty four dash twelve, which is approving the support for North Zimbro Sanitary Sewer District Regional Wastewater Treatment Facilities. G O bonding bill request.
I'll move resolution twenty four twelve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any comments on the bonding bill request?
You have seen the presentation before you, but this is the third time that it's happened before you. It's essentially to state that this is the number one priority for the city for any bonding bill that will be passed to the at the state of this year, and that is our sole request on here.
Motion and a second, and publicly thanking Prairie Island also for their support in this initiative. And publicly calling on our state leaders to please hear this proposal and to consider it because of its impact on our area. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I, thank you. All right, council, we are going to move on to MinDOT topics. Resolution twenty four dash thirteen, which is approving MinDOT limited use permit. You looked at our maps, this is pertaining to properties along County Road eleven and the overpass.
Fine, thank you.
So in the packet in front of you, you have the actual limited use permit document as well as a resolution approving that agreement. The city entered into an agreement with MinDOT back in twenty fourteen. It was a ten year limited use permit. Basically allows for the city to have a non-motorized pathway in Highway fifty two right of way surrounding that roundabout with County eleven, as well as on the other side that connects with our city trail out in front of the cemetery. MinDOT has requested that we renew this permit. It expires, I believe, in June of this year. This one would be approved and then last out until twenty thirty four. I discussed it with Attorney Boz and everything looks agreeable within that. We have to maintain the path as well as check with MinDOT if we plan to construct anything within it, but there are no plans to do, so.
Approve it or it disappears. Thank you, Public Works guys, for your work and keeping that clear for our walking in the community.
I'll move resolution twenty four thirteen.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Said the attorney is taking a look at this, and we've all had a chance to go through it as well.
Hey, Mayor, Bob Boz here, I just wanted to, I wanted an excuse to weigh in. Hi, everybody from Arkansas, I did look at it, it looks fine. And this is sort of a boilerplate agreement, but the the terms that Stephen laid out are as he said, and they look fine. So looks good to go from my angle.
Sweet, thanks.
Area of motion and a second. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I, we like to give our friends a walking path to town. All right, council, we're going to move to item F. Which is the request to approve the Good Hugh County G I S agreement. And this is a discussion we had here not too long ago.
Yes, so we had Good Hugh County in back in twenty twenty three to give us a presentation on their G I S services. The city currently contracts with a company called Ezri. It's a third party vendor that provides G I S. I know we work with with Seth with Ezri as well. The county had pitched us on transitioning to their software. It would provide the city with the same features that we currently have and then some. The county has a plethora of data regarding the county that Ezri obviously does not. So we would be able to kind of plug into the database that the county already has, and it would be an asset to staff. I know Public Works in discussions with them, they were on board for the transition and would have all the same options they currently do for utility locates, things like that. It would also benefit admin staff, the parcel viewer, tax information, things like that that the Ezri system currently doesn't have. I believe almost every city in Good Hugh County, Red Wings, Zimbroda, Cannon Falls, Wanamango, already goes with Good Hugh County, so we would be able to kind of information share with those communities as well, being all on the same platform. There is a price increase from current software to this software. Though price increase comes with capability increases, so it's well warranted. We would most likely continue on with Ezri through the remainder of twenty twenty four, so we could integrate all of our data we've collected there to the Good Hugh County. Good Hugh County has prorated twenty twenty four for us in the agreement. And the agreement, the only provisions regarding
Sorry.
Data is just anything that we create, we maintain ownership of, anything the county creates, they maintain ownership of as long as we're in an agreement, we are willing to share it with each other.
So we'd run both for the balance of twenty twenty four.
Yep, and then starting in twenty twenty five, have all of the Ezri information integrated into the Good Hugh County platform.
I know, too, just to give an example of like what other cities are utilizing, because we we checked in with the surrounding cities to see how they're utilizing it. For instance, a lot of the other cities are building databases of trees that are dying in their parks that need to be taken down, things like that, so they can just drop a pin in in the platforms. And so the county is willing to build whatever platforms we'd want to, what kind of data we want to maintain, so we really have would have total control of that.
And I think there'd be some usefulness to having similar programs to the other communities in the county. Just for information collection and sharing with the program, and it's a clean program.
I'll move to approve the Good Hugh County G I S agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to move forward with approving for the Good Hugh County G I S agreement. Any other discussion and questions, council? Staff has been researching this. Heard right presentation.
It's the way to go.
All right, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David will be I. Nice to get that rolling. All right, we are going to move into pickleball court discussions. This is going to be discussing the surface of the pickleball court. We've been using it now for a couple of years and looking at some maintenance discussion.
I can take it, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, we have gorgeous new pickleball courts with wonderful new hockey boards that we got to use for approximately eight days this winter. Our Public Works Department has has done a fantastic job the previous two summers of painting the pickleball courts. We get compliments each year how nice they look. However, the paint that we have used has not held up to the winter conditions. And it just isn't working because each year Public Works would have. As we're looking into the future, they would have to go back and repaint it every single year, so we wanted to look for a more sustainable solution. Public Works reached out to a plethora of painting and concrete companies. The problem is, is now we have two essentially bad layers of paint that have to be ground off the concrete. And then the concrete needs to be sand blasted to get some adhesion so that we can apply new paint. We could only find one company that would do all of those things, and that quote is before you in the packet. I think they reached out to about five other companies to see. We couldn't find anyone else to do the grinding and the shot blasting of the concrete. That would be a one-time cost to take off the paint and then to paint it again. If in the future in ten years or so, if we have to reapply, it would only be the painting, it wouldn't be this entire quote. It is more expensive than we thought it was going to be. So the quote came in at forty three thousand six hundred dollars. Again, the majority of that, though, is to remove the current paint that is there. In discussions with the park board, there was some question on if we could look at into some materials surfacing. And so we did reach out to Sport Court, which supplies resurfacing of pickleball courts and tennis courts. It's a tiling system that actually interlocked that you can put on top. Cassin recently did this to their tennis courts to make them dual tennis courts, pickleball courts. They had nothing but great things to say about them, however, that quote did come in at eighty two thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars. And then we would have to include staff time to actually lay the tiles and take them up. So there would be approximately like nine hundred and fifty tiles that would have to be laid every single year. So that would.
And then we go back to a liner.
Correct, we would have to. It also comes into play, we only have about an inch play in making ice. And so the tiles are about a half inch thick, so that would only give us about a half inch to be able to make ice if we went with the tiling system and left it in. Otherwise, if we remove the tiles, we would, we would have that inch, but honestly, I don't think it's worth it with staff labor. So I think that would be a great system. If, I know we've had loose conversations about if we were to add more pickleball courts, something like that, to include from the project in the very beginning. But because this is more so ice rink that we use in the summer for pickleball, I do believe that the painting quote is probably the better use of resources.
So is this with the discussion? I guess my first question is, was this the paint that was used when we first started using this when we constructed? Was was that? What kind of paint was that that did not?
It it was not, we learned a lot in this process. But essentially, after talking to different painting companies, the concrete should have been sealed first because it soaks in the moisture, and then the more the paint is essentially bubbling because the moisture is coming up through the cement. So that's why we'd have to grind grind it down, shot blast it down, and then the cement will actually be sealed. And that's a one-time deal, we wouldn't have to seal it again, so the cement will be sealed and then painted on top of that. And so we were just painted right on top of the concrete. Again, it's something we learned through trial and error. In the past, we spent about eight hundred dollars on paint because we did it all in-house on staff labor. We tried to essentially save a buck, and now we're paying part in the long run, and so we're trying to look for a more long-term solution.
Is this company? Have you looked into their work and are they back?
Yep, so they they have done work for the city of Rochester and the Rochester Athletic Club of their courts. And so we have, we have looked into their their past history. They're even, they reached out to their supplier directly to make sure that we would be able to make ice on top of paint. So no one's really done that before, but the supplier was confident that the paint would be fine with making ice over. Another complaint that we've had with the pickleball courts is that the paint gets slippery when there's moisture. This includes a little bit of coating in so that there would be some some non-slip.
Traction.
Yeah, so it it would be safer for pickleball players at all as well.
It's brutal, so that is one thing I've heard quite a few times from players about the the surface, and I guess we we've been investing money in the pickleball courts. And they they get utilized a lot, and they're, you know, compute, they're a community. They're a community asset with us. I guess my first que, my my first question with this with this plan is, are we looking to to have this done this spring yet?
Yep, so it's my understanding that it was a pretty big ask of us to make sure that these were done in time for Cheese Fest so that we could have a pickleball tournament again during Cheese Fest. And it's my understanding that they were willing to meet that timeline, so. Weather take plays a huge part, obviously, but it's it's actually my understanding that cooler is better. So the sooner we could approve this, the sooner, now we're getting snow next week, but.
They could get to it by April.
Does Parks have this money or?
Yeah, so so Parks does have this, they did vote in approval of the painting quote, they just wanted to look to see if there were cheaper alternatives. So it doesn't look like there is if if we're wanting to go that route, but yes, this would be taken out of our Parks Improvement Budget.
Maybe I didn't see if there's a warranty in case it doesn't hold up under ice or anything with this company.
So there, I I don't believe there's a warranty, they can't warranty it, that it will hold up because that's not what it was made for. But the supplier was confident that it would be able to.
Well, and maybe a liner is still a consideration to protect.
I will say, though, the majority of this quote isn't the paint. And so we we know, you know, every ten years or seven to ten years that we will have to touch up the paint. But again, we won't have to do the grinding, the surface prep or the sealing. In the future, we would only have to do the paint.
You guys confident?
You sound like there's a lot of options. I'll move approval of the resurface quote for the pickleball court.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the. Do you need to specify?
Yeah, can we specify?
Paint Dave's exterior painting.
Thank you.
Is that all right? Do I need to restate that? We're good, thank you, sorry.
And motion and a second to accept the quote from Dave's exterior painting. And if winter decides to come now, we'll see, there's a timeline for this. Any other discussion, council, on this project? Thanks, thanks for that work on putting this together and getting ahead of the curve. I'd rather we take care of it now than in the middle of the summer. Great, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is I. We're going to move into a request to approve emergency management river monitor quotes. And Sam Wenz is here representing the E O C.
I will add, before Sam begins, it was my fault, I left the quotes out of the packet, but they are handouts before you.
So as you may know, river monitors have become an important part of our public safety and planning the effects of flood, so we did some research and went out and did our fall checks on our current monitors, and we're finding that a lot of them are either damaged or not getting accurate readings. The damage is mostly from floating debris. It's actually causing a lot of the damage. So we're finding that parts on these current monitors are either outdated or actually discontinued through this com, through this company that we are using right now. So with that in mind, we are looking at getting four monitors that directly affect Pine Island, our upriver. And by recommendation of the National Weather Service and after doing some research on it, we're finding that the radar. As you can see from the quote, the radar levels, level sensors, sensors are going to be the best option. They're monitored the side of the bridge, so we avoid that issue of, you know, debris damaging them in the future and.
They mount to the bridge?
They actually mount to the side of the bridge and it uses radar to measure your water levels.
Do we need permission to do that to mount to a bridge?
We can actually get permission from Goodie County. In the current locations that the monitors are at, so that's something we can work with them on.
Are you able to remotely, then you'd be able to remotely read these rather than having to go out all the time or?
So there'd be, we would have a web-based access, so remotely access them at any point to read levels and everything, so.
How many monitors do we have total?
Right now, we have seven river monitors and two rain gauges right now, so.
So you replace four of this.
Four of the seven that are directly in Pine Island, so some of those are actually in other locations. Actually, some of them are east of, east of town towards Muzepa in that area, so we're finding that. We're not going to continue to maintain those just because they're not even affecting that community, so that's kind of how we base that. You can kind of see before you, there's the, the two quotes from Steel Tech and HydroMet. After talking to both companies, I'm finding that the, the HydroMet option is going to be better for future planning. I noted in the memo there that the Steel Tech option is more for. More rural areas, less rural than our area, so.
So I deal with this with fuel tank monitors. Do you know that we have good cell?
I do.
Signal where you want to put these, so.
So I've been in communication with the HydroMet company and we've done some.
Signal strength or testing or, okay. Because there are some spots where only satellite will work, right? Did I interrupt you? I'm sorry.
We can also add cameras on too, so that would be. An option for the future if we wanted to be able to watch water levels or.
For those that might question, you guys do a fantastic job of physically going out and putting your eyes on. On rivers as well, so it's not really necessarily our technology.
Another benefit of the, of the radar sensors is. We're gonna cut down on our maintenance. We don't have to winterize our current monitors is a. It's actually a pressure sensor in the water that we actually have to winterize every year and then put back in in the, in the spring, so. It'll cut back on maintenance and there's a lot less moving parts for things to go wrong with the radar sensors, so. The HydroMet, yeah.
Emergency management account's got money in it.
I'll move to approve the emergency management.
One question.
Quote of HydroMet.
We have a motion, we have a second, then we'll go to questions.
Second.
Motion, Brandy, your question?
Yeah, I see clearly that there's a warranty with the Steel Tech. I don't see one on the odds.
There is a warranty to that. I don't remember off the top. I have the exact warranty is.
As long as there is one.
Have a battery?
They do have a battery, yep.
Replaceable battery or? Okay.
And it's got a solar panel. It's rechargeable, so solar panel kind of keeps it recharged.
Any other questions for Mr. Lennis? Excellent presentation. Brandy.
I.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. All right, we're gonna move on to. Request to post for the finance position. We can deny it.
We better do. She's gonna leave. I don't care how much you deny it. She's leaving.
So are you leaving this one?
Yes, I can. So, as you know, last September, Ms. Kruger gave us a one-year notice. That on September sixth, twenty twenty-four, she will be retiring. I talked with council extensively about this in the fall that because of her institutional knowledge. I wanted to make sure that we had a decent time period for overlap and so that. Money was budgeted for twenty twenty-four. And so the time has come where I would like to post her position so that we can get someone in there, hopefully. Late spring, early summer, and that we can have at least three months, if not more, of overlap. Just because there is a lot to learn. The one. Caveat that I'll say is we are currently going through a wage study. Where we are looking at all the positions and we are looking at if we need to reclassify anyone. This is a position that. We probably will be reclassifying and so. I've talked with David Drown a little bit about this predicament, just because that data won't be back for probably like six to eight weeks. And obviously, we, we want it back before then so we can post, so I am actively working with them on updating the job description. We're looking at possibly changing the position from an accounting clerk to either a finance director or a finance clerk. That would be more attractive as well to anybody who would be applying for the position. And so we are looking in depth to her duties. I'm hoping to have that within the next week or two. And then a possible pay grade for that with the additional tasks that we would be including with that. So. I guess I don't know how we want to proceed if we want to table it for a future meeting or. If we want to post, but we can have information in there that this posi- position is currently under review. And so I could probably have a description done. But as far as the pay grade goes, that information's going to take a little bit to come back.
City job normally has a pay grade posted, right? When a job gets posted?
It, it does. I think we can also put in there that this is up for negotiation and that. It's not a unionized position, and so there's a little more flexibility that we have in hiring somebody and in the pay grade that we have for it.
When do we think we'll have the reclassification and stuff then?
The timeline for that, for the, the whole study to be completed isn't until midsummer, and so that would be.
So push this one position out quicker, right?
And that's what, even if we can just get an estimate, we can always fine tune it in the next coming months before we get someone hired. But I would like to get the posting out there because I would like to have that posting open for at least like a month. So just to let you know, finance clerk positions are probably the hardest position to fill with cities right now. And there's probably the most vacancies out of any government job throughout the state of Minnesota are finance clerks, so.
Is this something that we could look at if it comes back by our special meeting we have any?
I can bring back more information for our work session on April second.
I mean, it's probably not even going to be a clerk position, so it just feels like we don't know. We don't have a title or a pay range. It just feels.
And that's, that's kind of where I'm at, so I just wanted to put it on our radar. I'm fine with tabling it until our work session on April second. It doesn't have to be, no.
And I, and I like the idea of allowing city staff to have the opportunity to. Look at what's needed for our offices downstairs and, and Pine Island is right in line with communities our size right now with staffing, so. I think that'll be good for. For April, if everybody is agreeable to that. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to help Carol. Very much appreciated. We're gonna go on to planning commission. No items are listed under there. So let's move into Public Works Engineering, a request to approve the capital purchase of a Ranger which we. Briefly glanced at last month we presented this.
I can present it.
We tabled it last month because we were, I'll stop, you go ahead.
So we did ask to table this last month. We did have the same quotes are before you. Those haven't changed. The one item that has changed is the trade-in value. We would be able to trade in the Ranger to M and M. And so that trade-in value was included in the packet.
The other vendor doesn't have an interest in it? It's funny, I, I mean, I see the memo, but he left himself about seventeen outs on what he's gonna give us for it, but like, whatever. Just funny, right? If you've ever bought equipment, it's like, well, you didn't really commit to anything, but I get it.
And so we do have the two quotes. We have the quote to Model Pros for. Twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty, then we do have the quote to Eminem for a total of twenty-four thousand eighty-three dollars. With the trade-in, the Eminem would be the cheaper quote. Otherwise, we would have to sell the Ranger outright. It is also then purchasing from a local business.
I like keeping it local too, so I'll move approval to the purchase from Eminem.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. How are you sitting with it?
So you guys want?
I'll also add that this is a scheduled capital replacement, capital purchase.
Is the. It's Clarice right here. I agree with that, but is it a three thousand dollar better machine? Then what's the other one? Is Arica? Just questions.
Any other questions or comments, council? For guys taking care of their equipment, so that's very much appreciated. Brandy.
I.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. All right, let's go on to legal. Bob, do you have anything to share with us?
Yeah, Mayor, council, you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, more good news. I guess I get to deliver not great news sometimes. I think I mentioned at your last meeting that this zoning preemption housing bill, or actually bills plural. Have been moving forward. That was true as of a month ago. It's fair to say that this has become kind of the issue, I would say, at the League of Cities. And among lots of cities, maybe largely metro cities, but outstate cities as well. A huge amount of opposition now being poured in at the legislature on those bills and yet they plow forward. I think they're. I, I'm told by others in my firm that are following this more closely that the bills are sort of now coalescing around. A couple of pieces of proposed legislation, so another for narrowing the field. The, the more specific bad news is that it looks like the track that that's on is involves. Cities of the first class, big cities, in other words, being required to allow single-family home-zoned lots. To accommodate up to four units, quadplexes. And then non-cities of the first class, Pine Island being one, having to accommodate at least duplexes or two-family. Living on single-family home-zoned lots. Let's assume for the sake of argument that something is going to pass, and I'm told by people a lot smarter than me about legislative issues, that something is in fact. Going to pass. That just underscores, and maybe this is the good news, that underscores the importance, I think, of your wastewater plans that Craig. And co-engineer, lead engineer laid out for you earlier tonight. I mean, obviously, allowing much more dense development in your city puts pressure on lots of systems that you have. Transportation parks, other systems, but the wastewater would be right at the front of the class when it comes to pressure being put on systems. So having a plan in place as you're, as you're trying to do is, is going to be important if that legislation passes. I don't know what to say. There's nothing for you to do. I mean, cities are weighing in, writing letters. Maybe you've done that. I don't know. But, you know, there is a full-court press among municipal folks to say this is bad policy for the state, and yet it plows forward. And so I think we have to start, you know, both playing offense here, but also thinking about defense and what's gonna happen if, in fact. City zoning authority gets really fundamentally limited and impacted this way. So I, I'm happy to say what I can about that. I'm not our, our legislative guru, but I certainly have been made aware of this by the other cities I work with. And, and on your behalf too. And, and so I wanted to update you on that. I guess I don't think, there are a few other things going on that staff and I've been working on. That are probably, don't probably rise to the level of things I need to report on to you here tonight, a couple of other legal things, but they aren't really. They don't appear to be headed toward disputes or litigation or anything like that that I need to bring you up to speed on now. So I will, I will stop there, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate the update and I just, I get discouraged with the fact that state government. Seems to keep wanting to take away autonomy from communities to be able to govern like this, and it's very frustrating.
What, what's the offensive we should take and will it, what matter?
Yeah, I mean, the strategy that I think the League of Cities, Daniel Lightfoot, is the League of Cities lobbyist who's sort of. Organizing opposition among cities. The approach taken, which is common frankly, when cities don't like legislation that's being proposed. Is to, you know, generally oppose it, say Pine Island doesn't like it if you were to send something in, and by the way. It's obvious that you guys know how to do this. You're doing it very effectively on your wastewater treatment plant. You're interacting with the legislature very effectively, so you know what you're doing, but. That the approach that cities are taking here is to say this is bad policy generally, but specifically for our community. Here are some of the possible impacts. And I guess the obvious one for you, I think, is the, is the wastewater impact. You've got a plan. You're working hard on a plan. But it's not a done deal at this point, right? And, and, you know, you've got limits as we sit here today. On the amount of growth you can accommodate, and this bill, if it passed, would really fundamentally change the amount of growth that you'd be forced. By the state to accommodate, whether you have the ability to do it or not. And so it's just. I mean, it strikes me that there's a low-hanging fruit there for you to make a comment that this just wouldn't work. I mean, what would you do unless? In a year or a couple of years down the road, you have a regional plant in place. It, this is not a workable plan that the legislature is sort of cramming down local government's throat if this bill were to pass. So that's the approach that cities are being encouraged to take is point out something that's really truly local to your community. That's what becomes effective with your legislators. I don't know frankly where your legislators stand on this bill. You probably all do. Or I, I keep saying bill. It's bills currently, although they again are coalescing, it seems around. There, there were at one point four different bills out there. I think we're down to two now, and there is some expectation that that's going to be narrowed to one through a conference committee, so. Anyway, you know better than I do what would be most effective with your, our local legislators, but the encouragement is to just point out the local impacts that. That a bill like this could have, forcing cities to accommodate more than single-family homes on lots that you've always believed. We're going to have single-family homes. I mean, that's just very difficult for your community and other communities to accommodate.
No, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Any questions, council for Bob?
Thanks.
There was, we are going to move into department updates. Claims, thank you.
Move claims, second.
Motion in a second on claims. Brandy.
I.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Our commissioner is here. Good evening, commissioner. Didn't you want to say anything?
Yeah, we talked today last week.
Yeah, we talked today last week, you know, over across the state. I have seven that I represent and. One of the big things we're talking about is landfills and we lost.
Yeah, I do personally.
When it's companies, it just depends on where they're at.
Then what it is and what, I mean, I'm right, truthful, so I figure out what I got and what it's gonna cost me and.
Yeah, that's uh the townships, you know, basically said, you know, the county should be getting involved and. And I think we can do it, you know, we're just gonna have to set the rates accordingly and and uh, you know, handle that. Cause it's, all our townships are telling us there's more perversion in the ditch. Right, and uh, on my list here is to talk about the bridge on five eleven, which is in our stadium. And uh, we did review the S R O. I know it's an issue right now from the sheriff's department at the school district. Um, where uh Hope, Subroda, Muzepa, and Pine Island are the last two, but still have an S R O, it's in the county. Um, we did raise their rate also, you know, I know we've raised your, you know, rate for the. Um, you know, trying to negotiate, come up with, you know, as fair as we can and uh just being fair to all the other taxpayers.
CM and Pine Island are the only two schools in the county with a S R O.
Well, Red Wing, City of Red Wing provides their own through their police department. Camp Falls provides theirs. Subroda is a, they don't provide a full-time S R O. And Kenyon is, you know, takes care of the Kenyon sites, so.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
Other than that, I have nothing else.
I I I guess I'm looking forward to hearing how that S R O program moves forward and. I I guess as a city leader, my one concern with that is if we are left with one deputy in town that's wanting, they're supposed to be covering the city and then. Responding to the school. You know how how that balance is gonna look? Cody does an excellent job up there, his work and what he's able to handle, and we see it in the run reports. The work that they're doing too, so it's um, we're not taking away from our streets because we get harassed enough about. Getting more deputies, you know, to cover larger areas, so.
My own personal thinking, you know, we need to uh. Put a few deputies just on schools, you know, if that's possible, just rotate all our schools. You know, granted, it would be uh, you know, on-site all the time, but, you know, maybe there's.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioner. Administrator.
Everything's in my report.
I agree, Ms. Rachel.
And we just finished our one-town, one-title programming. We had a really good turnout for all the different events. I wanna personally thank the fire departments and all of the work that they helped did with. They did for us and helping us with the pole site and programming help. That was a wonderful um collaboration that we've had with them. Um, I also wanna thank staff, uh my library staff, for their flexibility this month. We're having, um, three of us are off. I was off last week and I've got two um staff members off this week. And just the flexibility that they provide for all of us to have our vacations, so. Public thank you to all of my people in the library. We just did a movement. The storytime is happening with Miss Heidi, uh Wednesday mornings and every other Friday morning. She's also doing a uh preschool literacy on playground at Miss Angie's place, and that I think it's every other Thursday. And also some Saturdays each month. It's on Miss Angie's Facebook page, and we have shared that information. Um, but that's just a really good way to get kids out, especially with the snow maybe coming. And um, shush, I know, and just having the ability to give them some early literacy training and uh get some information to be adults. Books and bruises meeting. We had a westerns this last month. This coming month is poetry, so come on up, uh South East. And talk the poetry. See who's your favorite. I'm Robert Frost, so yeah, one more about that. Otherwise, uh green thumbs, anyone. We're gonna be sprucing up a little bit around the library this spring, just getting rid of some of the um. We've had some, a lot of blowback from the the gardens that we have around the library. A lot of the mulch has been escaping. From the snowy rule and wind and everything else, so I would love to get some volunteers helping me out with that. Um, we've got lots of other stuff going on. Um, I just finalized my annual report, so next month I hope to give a short presentation on that during the council meeting. Just to give you all updates to let you know how we're doing, so.
Do you, you don't organize one specific cleanup day?
No, no, we haven't done that. It might be not be a bad idea.
Just, yeah, right, church golf course, right? For years, we've, yeah, you just, there's a Saturday and everybody shows up with gloves, right? Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, that's an idea, yeah. That might be something to do. We're also be having a used book sale here soon. Um, my library board is currently debating if we're gonna have it in the RASSA weekend. Or is it safe for you to do it for Tuesday weekend?
Do it for both.
Do you make it for both, she says?
I know it is, and I helped you last year, so I understand. Um, but I do have a spot reserved if you want to do it down on the grounds.
Thank you. So we'll definitely be talking about it, so.
And if you wanna do it one day, that's possible too.
Cool. That might help. Any other questions, comments for me if I?
Thanks. A lot of, a lot of positive feedback on your one-town, one-title, so thank you for.
Well, God, I'm already starting to look at books.
Already rolling.
Yes, never ending. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works. All ready for the week. E D A, that comes from you, fire department, sheriff's office, how's it going? Nice to see you here tonight. Otherwise, counsel. We're wrapping up.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is I. Thank you, everybody, for coming on.